I'm trying to put a proposal together. I don't always agree with those citizens. I don't know if Sean Swetzer. I mean philosophically, we're probably on the opposite ends of the world. But they actually put together what I believe to be something very valuable and something really good for our city. And it's one of those times that we can actually cross the lines and talk to the other side and find out what it is that they're trying to get accomplished. So the reason I picked my district as a model and as a pilot is that I think I've got some pretty cool things happening. One, I've got one of the longest, and most people in the council aren't even aware of this yet, but I've got one of the longest cycling and bike paths I've been working with the state of Arizona to be installed in my district. It's going to be beyond cool. And this Complete Streets really looks at different lifestyles, individuals, millennials, people that I want to see move into my district. I want to see a different type of atmosphere be created in my district. So I worked with Sean and his group to find a way to institute some of these very creative ideas in the city of Phoenix that have been done in other places around the country, but at the same time, find a way to use it as a pilot. So one of the things that we've done, like on street projects, street projects are going to be excluded, and Sean will be here too. We've worked through some very detailed things. One of the new things that came up was on some of the bids, on some of the projects that come forward, especially the government projects, the contractors wanted to say, hey, look, at the very least, it's very reasonable, make this be part of the pre-design, so that it's designed ahead of time with the streets, the Complete Streets design program that's in place. So the whole idea was literally to create a way to improve the district and find a new method of way we were building. I don't think people are happy with a lot of the cookie cutter homes, but at the same time, work with the industries and work with the individuals that are out there and find a model that we can test. And I chose my district. I am happy with that. I think that after five years of hard work by these groups, these individuals, again, with a lot of times that we're politically, we're on opposite ends of the world, but they came up with something creative, something fantastic that I think that could be instituted. Why not look at my district as a model? So if I could, do you want me to just put the motion on the table, then we can respond to that? Or does that answer your question?
Go ahead.
Councilwoman. So the motion I'd like to put on the table is to move approval of the pilot program for the Complete Street Design Guidelines in Council District Six as outlined in the June 29, 2018 letter from myself and council members Noakowski and Pastor with the clarifications that reference to the government projects that we just talked about, covers new development projects moving forward and excludes right away improvements and maintenance projects. So if you're basically overlaying a street, it's not going to include that. We're talking about complete new builds that are out there. The pilot will be in place until superseded by the council adoption of overall city of Phoenix Complete Street Guidelines. Additionally in there, the design standards, okay, this is all the handwritten part, design standards. Okay, this deals with the pre-bid. Design standards be placed in the pre-bid process for any type of government project. So if we're building a new street or a new project, it would be done ahead of time, so that you didn't have to go back into it later in the future. You would have to include those design standards ahead of time. The direction, hold on a second. Oh, and then this is not part of the motion, but mostly a direction to start coming up with more specificity on the Complete Streets designed with the working groups come up and more clarifying of terms and definitions. So that would be my motion that I would like to include in this.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I'm going to take just a minute to respond because I'm the one that really insisted that we pause because in the last three years, maybe four, we had eight different citizens committee coming, working on designs that all impacted streets. And they were all done independently of each other. And when you combine them all, that was my question, what do we have? Because you had streets, you had shade, you had sidewalks, you had bikes, you had actual street design, et cetera, et cetera. And I just wanted to make sure that whatever we come up with was flexible enough to fit downtown, to fit the far north, the far south, whatever was being developed. And I thought it ought to be consolidated by a citizens committee, which I believe met last night. And from everything I've heard, it was very positive. They were working together to really combine and make sure that it's all workable. And it's, no way, not saying we don't want Complete Streets, I just want to make sure that it is workable with every other plan we have and every other citizens committee because their work was very important, too. It should be back to the council mid to late September as a final package to adopt, which I think your motion just included. When that happens, that supersedes this?
Yes. It would end up, well, it would supersede this. And remember, this is a model for my district. And so it's designed to see and find a way to test it, which I'm very excited about. I know it's kind of scary for a lot of people to look at something new that's going to come in, but the whole idea literally is to create something where I'm going to be able to drive individuals that normally wouldn't go into an area. For example, one of my areas is Owatuki. We've got this huge piece of state land out there and that it's going to also be right next to the bike path that's going to be at least 11 miles in one direction where you don't have to stop. So where you have high-speed cyclists, you can have individuals be able to be on that park. And where they'd be able to look at housing in there with these new design standards that would be able to be accommodating to that. I think this is going to be one of those things that everyone's nervous about. I know, I understand that. I understand the anxiety levels because whenever you make changes, things like that always happen. But sometimes you have to be a little bit more forward-thinking, and I think these individuals have done a fabulous job. And the way we've designed this motion is that it's an easy way to test it and it's an easy way to model. So as we're moving forward with that, the Complete Streets guideline, I want to make sure stays in place in my district because I want to be able to model it. I want to be able to see it as a pilot. And then if there are problems with that, then I want to be able to come back and make those changes later. But you won't know that until you're able to test it and see where those problems are. It's no different than in a business. Sometimes you have to take a move forward in order to see what it's going to be. So I'm excited. It's a big step for the city of Phoenix. It's a huge step for the city of Phoenix. And it's one that I think is going to come in place and that others are going to look at and say, wow, I'd like to do this for my area as well. And I chose myself to be able to use my district as the location for this because it is a gamble. And people know that I'm willing to take a chance on things and move things forward. And I think that that's what you do in leadership roles. Now, I'm not willing to make many other changes to this. I know that there's some thoughts of like the pre-app meetings and stuff like that, but then that basically neuters the program. I couldn't do that. But thank you.
Councilwoman Stark?
Yes, thank you. I applaud you, Sal, again, for doing a pilot program. I had an opportunity on my vacation. I was in Seattle. And even though I was on my vacation, I put my planner hat on and I took numerous pictures. And Seattle has a great Complete Street program. It's probably one of the best in the country. And again, my background is in planning, so I know a lot about Complete Streets. I will have to tell you that one of the things they did in Seattle is they took a gamble. They chose a couple streets and they used capital improvement funds to fund a street to make it work. I went along, I think it was Second Street, which has a buffered bike lane. And it went from, I think, the market all the way over to Bell Town. Wonderful project. It was completed by the city of Seattle. It really sowed, I think, a lot of people on the Complete Street process. So I, to say you want to take streets out, I mean generally Complete Streets means streets. It's not just about moving cars. It's also about moving bikes, pedestrians. So I think we need to do a street. We need to choose something and actually apply it and see how it works to see how your pilot will work. I mean, I think it's great what you're suggesting, but we need to have a real project so we can evaluate it. I've been attending the Complete Street meetings. They have been very good meetings. There's been a little tension, but I think we're getting there. I think we're very close. I think we're going to have a product to bring to the council we'll be proud of. I know, Councilwoman, you'll be gone, but I know you did a lot of work on this. I know you led the charge on it, but I think we can bring something to make you proud. I appreciate what you're saying, Sal, but I think we have to have a real pilot program, a real street to evaluate. Thank you.
Mayor, may I respond back? You will have a street once it gets built. What we're talking about here are the current streets that are in there that are excluded from this. When you do an overlay, you don't want to include that in there. That would defy logic. I mean, you fill in a pothole. This would include new projects, new streets in the district. So it does include that. It does what you say. But I got to tell you, and I'm going to run into this, but at some point, you're either going to move forward or not. I've used my district. If, you know, people don't want to use it in my district, I understand the politics of this because it is politically charged. It's doing something that's outside of the norm. I get it. That's why I chose my district to do this. I think it would be a mistake on the city's end to turn back all the hard work these individuals have done, but I also think it would be a mistake to not try to model this somewhere and see how it works. So, but it does include streets, new streets, not old streets that are already there that you have to go back and redesign. That's just not going to happen. We wouldn't have any money left if that was the case.
Councilwoman?
So I was one of the, one of the people that signed off on the letter to put Complete Streets back onto the agenda for Councilman DeCiccio. And just like Councilman Stark, I had the pleasure of going to an area where I was impressed at the fact that there was a Complete Streets model there and was able to feel it, touch it, understand it. It was really an anti-car environment. It was walkable. The whole area had different types of transportation that went about moving people, bicycle, but it was, but cars were not encouraged. And if cars were there, then you were going to pay a strong fee for the space or you were going to be driving around several minutes to parallel park and find parking because in the neighborhoods, there was no parking for that area. It was permanent. And so I get the concept and I understand it. I guess my question to Alan is in implementing Complete Streets, my understanding and the conversations that I have had, my understanding, and let me just be clear, I got back yesterday from vacation, so this is now me working constantly yesterday to catch up, that there has been a pre-application submitted or looked at for this area.
So Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, there, the development process includes a pre-application for any type of either zoning project or Development Division project. And so when someone comes in, the first step they have with my department is a pre-application meeting. And so there are any number of pre-application meetings that have been filed for parcels, you know, within, anywhere in the city. And so in this particular instance, there are parcels that are vacant that would probably fit that criteria. There's not a lot of them in the analysis that we've done, but I don't know if every one of those parcels that are eligible has had a pre-app meeting, but some of them have had pre-application meetings.
So in passing this stipulation, in passing this, then what happens to those that have been in for a pre-application? Do they now have to follow these standards?
With the, the current motion that Councilman DeCiccio put forward, I would say yes, they would have to follow some of these standards. We would have to figure out exactly how to apply the standards. I think part of the challenge with the Complete Streets Design Guidelines is it puts forth other ideals on how to regulate properties, but you still have the existing city code ordinance requirements for drainage, design manuals, all those other things that still control today. So what staff would have to look at is how do these design guidelines impact those and then how do we apply them on a site-specific basis? So it would take more in-depth analysis to really get to exactly what all those requirements are because the design guidelines are broader policy statements and provide lots of options that may or may not work on specific sites.
So it could affect a project, a pre-app that isn't currently in, it could affect that project?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, and just if you could even explain what the pre-app is. This is basically somebody coming in, showing that they want to do certain things in an area. There aren't any standards that have been put in place in those pre-apps. I've been through them myself. So I mean, if you don't include the pre-app process in there, we're never going to get a chance, well, not never. The odds of getting a change on this stuff, it just makes it harder and it basically neuters the program. I'm looking to get something done, get something accomplished, and make it happen in my district. Again, I understand the politics of this. It's hard to get people to move onto something that's creative like that. And the problem that I've heard too, I mean, I've heard, you know, and believe it or not, I mean, it's odd that I'm actually on, you know, I'm helping promote this, but I think it's just really cool. And I think it's going to be amazing for the city of Phoenix. It's going to be one of the most creative things that we've done. It's going to push the envelope. It's going to get us into a different level and it's going to be able to open our door to other individuals that would normally not look at the city of Phoenix as a place that they want to call home. I think it's going to do tremendous things for quality of life and it's going to be an improvement from what we have today. And I think it's time for us to start moving and looking a little forward on this. So the reason I did this is my district, again, and that's why I don't want to include the, taking out the pre-app part, because we want to be able to model this. If we don't model this, it's never going to happen. And it gets everybody to start moving forward. And I feel bad for the citizens that have worked on this because they've literally been held at abeyance for, what, five years now? It's time to move forward on things. I mean, we can always say, hey, we saw another model somewhere else, but at some point, you've got to move forward. Otherwise, we're going to constantly be looking and trying to figure out what's going to work and what doesn't. And the, the way this is also set up is that if something doesn't work, and for instance, let's say it becomes too much of a consternation, that doesn't mean we can't change it later. But we have to test it in order to see what the market is going to do. If we're not testing it, it's not going to do anything. You have to test it sooner than later, and you have to be able to see what the market's going to do before you're able to make those changes. And you assemble people and you talk to them and say, hey, look, here are the problems that we've identified. Right now, people are afraid because no one's been able to identify what the problems could be. Well, you know, no, nobody has ever moved forward if they've never taken that chance and moved things down, the ball down the field. When you throw a pass in football, you never know if it's going to be intercepted, but you know what? 60% of most plays, at least in the pros, are passes. Because, you know why they're passes? Because they're risked, but they also bring in some high rewards. That's what the same thing is here. The city of Phoenix, and I picked my district, you know, I'm the one that's going to be liable for it if, you know, something goes wrong, but it's not going to. I'm going to take a strong hand on this and make sure that it's done correctly. We are going to be able to get this thing done and put something in place that I think is going to be tremendous for the city of Phoenix. But we're going to have to model it first. Thank you.
We do have some cards. I have one card that's in opposition, CJ Hager, and the one that's not sure, which is Stacy Champion. And then I have other cards, one neutral and four in favor, and that have asked to speak. And then I have four, I believe, that are all in favor but do not wish to speak. And I'm going to ask that the clerk enter these names in the record, but of the appropriate position that they've taken. And I'm not going to ask them to come up to speak because I will tell you, this meeting has some very important other items on the agenda we want to get to, and our time is limited. So if you have no objections, Councilman, okay.
You know, you may want to get one or two individuals speak in behalf of, if that's what they'd like to do.
I actually was thinking of offering a substitute motion. So my motion would be to approve the original three council member memo to include all government programs so that we're not imposing anything on the private sector, we're not doing ourselves, but to accommodate Councilwoman Pastor's point to exclude any projects that have already gone through a pre-application process.
Does that have a second?
And I won't support that because it basically neuters it in that respect. But you're welcome to move it forward.
Wait, do I have a second?
So the motion was to, to move the three council member memo, including all government projects.
Oh, including, okay.
But to not include any private sector project that's already gone through pre-application to accommodate what, Councilwoman Pastor made the point that if businesses are already investing money and we're changing the rules.
So anything in pre-app is excused from this?
This conversation?
Yeah, right. And so it would be government projects only. And do I have a second for the motion?
Or if some, so Councilman DeCiccio specifically mentioned the project in Owatuki that he thought would be the first big test. And so this would allow that to be the first big test, as he hoped.
No, I'm not doing that.
Wait, 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 wait.
I don't want people dictating in the district.
Councilman, please.
Okay.
Is there a second for the substitute motion?
I'll second it per point of discussion, and I have a couple questions.
Okay. Now, Councilman DeCiccio, did you want to make a comment before I call on council? I'm going to start.
Yeah, I'm not going to support that because I think it basically neuters it. You'll never be able to do a real test on this. It's just another delay tactic. Appreciate it, but it just delays us even further. I'd like to get this thing moving forward. I understand, again, the political side of this thing. It becomes more favorable toward developers. It just does. I'm a developer myself, and I think that most of these things that we do here are good things. And these are things that will be done. And I know the development community was opposed to a lot of this. They shouldn't be because these are things that we do in a lot of ways. So the whole idea was this whole pre-app part over there because the pre-app basically delays everything further out. And then you're going to see major changes occur and it's going to die. That's just essentially what's going to happen here.
Councilwoman Stark?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Looking at the following conditions, it seems to me it pretty much limits it in District Six. Do you guys have some idea of what percentage of land area might be? I don't know which one of you to ask, but percentage of land area it might impact?
So Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, staff has done some, you know, quick analysis this afternoon, and we believe that it would apply to about 1.6% of the land area in District Six, given the caveats of the three acres and the seven acres. You know, there, the caveat to that would be that we, someone could assemble land and we don't know about that, but given the likely vacant parcels that are out there, known redevelopment ones that staff is aware of, that's where we get that 1.6% of the acreage within District Six that it would apply to.
So that seems kind of limiting. I, I like the idea of including all government projects, like you mentioned, Councilwoman. I, I still think we need to really take a real street and apply it and see how this works. I know in District Three, on 32nd Street, we did what was called a road diet, which is partially a concept of Complete Streets. And they narrowed the lanes from three to two and they included a bike lane. Now, it wasn't buffered, but it certainly started putting some of the principles of Complete Streets into place. And I understand that every street is the same when it comes to Complete Streets. There can be streets within the urban area versus a rural area versus high-traffic area where you really do need to move cars because of commerce versus neighborhoods. So I really do want to go back to, if we, if we really want to make this happen, we need to find a street. And I know there's some streets that were allocated for bike designation. Maybe we look at one of those. I think we need to apply it so we can see if it really works. I'm all for Complete Streets, Sal. I think it's a great idea.
Mayor, may I address that again, too, since it's in my district?
All right, please.
The only thing I'm going to ask the council to do is don't do something in my district that I don't think is going to work. I did this because I was trying to find a compromise with individuals that I normally don't agree with, to try to find a way that something that they had some really good things in this plan of theirs, that's all this was. So if it's going to be changed around, I would prefer us to just kill it at this point then. Because as far as I'm concerned, if it's not done right the first time, remember when I got through the 24-hour permitting? And I had multiple people come up and go, well, let's change this. I go, no, it's got to be done right, and it's got to be done right the first time. And that's why I'm somewhat controversial, is because I do insist on things being done right. If it's going to change from that, then, and avoid the whole pre-application process, then I'm going to be voting no, and I'm just going to ask the rest of the council not to impose this on my district because I was trying to find a bridge that people would, you would think would be supportive of this, but they're not. You know, so they're trying to find a way to neuter this thing. And I'd rather just die at that point. I just don't want this to be done if it's not going to be done right.
Okay. Any other further comments?
I want to say, I'm certainly not trying to neuter this. I've been working on Complete Streets since before I was elected to the council.
But it's not going in your district.
Fifty people have passed away.
Right, but why didn't you propose this for your district?
Please, she's got the floor. She's got the floor.
Certainly think that safe communities are important, but if the councilman wants to withdraw it, that is fine with me.
I'd rather just take an up or down vote on it.
All right.
Personally.
All right. Well, we're going to take it on the substitute motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post.
No.
We'll call.
DeCiccio, Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Williams.
Yes. And the reason being is it not only would include the Complete Streets program, but you would have to take into consideration all of the other adopted programs for street design, including the sidewalks, the shade, the bicycles. And at this point in time, no one knows if they're all compatible. And I just want to make sure in a month's time, we would have the answer to that, and then it could be reconsidered as for an identified project in District Six. So motion fails. Four, three. Passes, I mean, four, three. Oops.
The substitute passed.
The substitute passed. Okay. So we will go to the next item, which is the appointment for the council District Five. It is an interesting process. What I hope to have is I will call names alphabetically. You can go to the podium. You will have five minutes to speak to the council. Council can then ask a question if they so desire, if they have any questions of you. And then we will go to the next one. At the end of that, we will then make a decision as a council, hopefully. If we do not make a decision today, it will be posted this or tomorrow. This would be, meeting would be recessed and we would try again tomorrow. I will tell you, serving on the city council is an awesome responsibility. It is someone that enjoys working with the community. Phoenix is one of the greatest cities, if not the best, city in America. It is something we're all very proud of. Being on the council is interesting. You learn a lot. You meet so many people. So I want to thank everyone who's applied and is going to participate in this. It takes courage to put your name in. It takes courage to stand up there. And I know you have to have a lot of resolve to, to serve and be part of this community. So I just want to thank you beforehand for participating, and I'm eager to hear what you have to say. So Audrey Bell Jenkins will be first. If you would like to come to the podium.
Afternoon. Am I able to pass these out to, hand to the council? Thank you. Good afternoon, council members, Mayor Thelda Williams, and our esteemed audience. My name is Audrey Bell Jenkins, and I proudly reside in District Five. I am a human service advocate, a community advocate, and a women's empowerment advocate. Additionally, I proudly serve as a commissioner for the Human Services Commission, and I serve on the Community Development Block Grant. I am an advocate for my community. The areas of expertise that I will bring to the council and the city of Phoenix will be workforce development, women empowerment, education, homelessness, substance abuse, mental illness. I currently am employed with U-BOM New Day Center as their work I currently am employed with U-Mom New Day Center as their workforce specialist. I handle all aspects of U-Mom properties as far as employment. I have direct contact with, I made intentional, intentionally made contact with all our hiring managers to get our people employed for gainful and sustainable employment. Additionally, I co-direct an organization called House of Miracles with my husband. We service individuals, adult individuals, who are in the early stages of recovery from drugs and alcohol, and we do assist domestic violence survivors. In that program, we teach drug prevention. We have life coaching. We reach out to organizations that, once the individuals leave our properties, that they are able to reintegrate themselves back into the community and additionally reintegrate themselves back into their, with their families. I know that I can be a tremendous asset to the city of Phoenix, to the council. I partner with University of Arizona Family Resource Center. I assist in their women's support group. I host women empowerment summits, teen empowerment summits throughout the city of Phoenix to bring empowerment to women who may be a bit less fortunate and those that may be fortunate in some respects, but to bring empowerment to women within our community. I also bring empowerment to our teens in our community, to assist them in placement in college, in employment, and just to understand bullying and how to maneuver into adulthood. Again, I know that I can be an asset. I have been living in Phoenix for nearly 20 years now. And in that time, I have entrenched myself in booster clubs and PTOs with my daughters. I continually speak to my neighbors to find out what we can do to better assist our communities. And I have supported a lot of individuals in our community to, just to be an asset to the community. I collaborate with, again, a number of organizations, South Phoenix Healthy Start. They have an infant program for infant mortality. So I am just a community advocate, as I said, a community advocate, a human services advocate, a women empowerment advocate. I would love the councilmembers to really take a look at my skills and expertise and what I can bring to the council. And I know I can be an asset. I'm looking forward to being an asset. I'm ready to be an asset to this community continuously. Thank you, and I'm ready for any questions.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have a question? Mary Ann?
I have a question.
Councilman?
So how long have you lived in the district?
I have lived in the district since 2003. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Betty Guardo.
Good afternoon. My name is Betty Guardo, and only in America would I be standing here in front of you today. I am a daughter of immigrants, a family who fought to be together. And we have believed in our country, and we have sat together to build a great community. I was a hotel housekeeper. And as a hotel housekeeper, I learned that I needed to change my life around. And with that, I was able to build a better life for myself, for people around me, and for my two children. I believe in community. I believe in the work that I sit and I do every single day. I have lived in the district for almost 11 years. I have been in the state of Arizona for almost 12. Living in the city of Maryvale has been a great experience for myself and for all the work that I have been able to do in this, in this district as part of this community. I have devoted my life, I have devoted 20 years of my life encouraging others, working with people, inspiring people for them to go ahead and change their lives the same way that one day I did. I've inspired housekeepers. I've inspired dishwashers. I've inspired people out in the community to do the right thing. I have registered hundreds of workers and hundreds of people out in the community to vote. I have strived to build a community here in Phoenix to do the right thing. I believe, and I know that we all believe in this city, that what we want is people to be educated. And I believe that that has been my role for 20 years, is to educate people, to get people to stand up for themselves, to be able to provide for their own families. And that has been my role for almost 20 years. I've worked with many of you to make sure that that is what we're doing out in our communities. I am very lucky to be standing here in front of you, and I hope to be able to gain your trust. I hope to be able to work with every single one of you to be able to build a better Phoenix for our children, for our community. I believe in everything that you guys do every day on the city council. I believe since 2007 that I moved to the state, I've been part of the city council with all of you to build it and to bring a better future for our children. I believe that it's time to keep building. This is a great moment. I am a woman of color. I am a mother. I am a daughter. I am an immigrant. I am that person that has been out there striving, building people, and encouraging people to fight, and encouraging people to do the right thing and to be able to move this city forward. I want to serve on the city council that empowers people to improve their own lives with paychecks families deserve, healthcare families can afford, homes families can buy, schools that teach success, and neighborhoods filled with sounds of joy and not sirens of danger. I recognized that city government can do all those things. But I believe that Phoenix, the community, can. Phoenix can be that place. Phoenix can be better, stronger, unified, around the simple idea that the common interest is more important than any other special interest. Phoenix can be a city that people look up to, not a city that people look at. A city where working people can thrive, where people believe that there is their responsibility to build the city, to build a great community. I love my children. My children are going to be raised in this amazing city. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you for taking the time and considering me.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, please. Please take your seat.
I have a question, and I forgot to ask this question previously. My question is, we are going through some changes, and we will be selecting in the near future another candidate. And one of the questions, this is a hard question to ask, but one of the questions is our stability of the city for the future, and in particular, of our city manager. My question is, if you were to be nominated or appointed, would you be willing to make a change in the city manager?
I believe that I am willing to work with all of you to do the changes that need to happen. As a person, I don't, I don't make decisions. I come from a community where we make decisions as a whole, and I would be making that decision as a team, which I think is what I am, I am trying to build. That's what I've built where I come from, and I want to bring that to the city of Phoenix.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilman?
I have a couple, only because I find her so impressive. I don't think people realize how impressive this woman is and her background. And I think that it's important that you also share a little bit about your background, your life story. So my question to you, Betty, Miss Guardo.
Thank you.
Is to give us a little bit of history on yourself and how you got to where you are today and how hard it's been in your life, but you've strived forward in every step of the way.
Absolutely. I am the oldest of three children. I was born and raised in Los Angeles, California. I grew up in Watts, if you guys are familiar with the area. And that is where I grew up with my two brothers. My mother worked as a housekeeper. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's important.
My dad passed away from diabetes almost, almost 10 years ago. And I decided to break that chain for that little one over there. He's seven, raise your hand. And I fight every single day for him. Sit down. And I fight every single day for him and for his younger brother. I want to build community. I've been building community for 20 years. I was a housekeeper at a hotel in Century Plaza in Beverly Hills for three years. As Sal learned, and other people have learned, I wasn't very pro-union. I was very for myself. I was raised, you don't depend on government. You, you push yourself forward, you go to school, you study. You don't depend on anyone to move forward. And it was hard for me for that reason to depend on the union and to depend on others to help me move forward. But one day, I made a decision. I trusted, and that is how I went from being a housekeeper to being the leader of the union here in Phoenix, Arizona. I am the vice president of the union now at the international level, and I am the vice president now for the union here in Phoenix. But yes, I've mopped the floors. I've washed the dishes as my mother went off to work because my father was disabled in a bed. Like, I've done all of that work. I helped raise my two younger brothers. And now I am raising my two children here in Phoenix. Both of them come to committee meetings with me. Both of them come to work with me. A lot of them, we have plenty of pictures of David out there precinct walking for a lot of our friends. So yes, that is, that is my goal in life, to be able to teach my children to do the right thing and to be part of this community and keep moving it forward.
So we talked about this before, too. We have a lot of similarities. I'm a son of immigrants as well, and a lot of, a lot of the same things. You know, my mom and dad worked two jobs. They just worked hard their entire lives. People that are sons and children of immigrants, people don't realize how hard they work, and it's ingrained in them. And you can probably see that, you know, my whole family is a family of immigrants, which most of us are, but first generation's pretty hard, you know? And it's always harder on the children. I've got another question for you dealing with streets. We've talked about this, and, you know, you don't need to comment on this part, but I really believe that your district has been neglected over many years, many years. And it's just, it's just in horrible shape right now. I mean, if you look at the services, the amount of problems that we have there, the accidents that are there, District Five is always near the top because it's been neglected. That's what happens up here sometimes. You have political people that are more interested in themselves rather than taking care of the public. What would be one of the first few steps that you'd be willing to take? Just, at the very least, fix some of the lights. And explain the light situation. And I would hope that the city manager would at least get this thing fixed. Tell them about your light.
I mean, I live on 59th Avenue in Indian School. And I would want to say, I want to say maybe once a week for the last six months, I have called to get the light fixed out, out in the street. I live in a cul-de-sac. It's a small circle, and there's no lighting at night. So after 6:00, there's no lighting in, in the street where, where I, where I live. And yes, there are many, as someone that lives in the district, I see a lot of those issues. I've spoken, you know, we've spoken, and, and I believe that there's a lot of great things that have happened in the district. But as someone that lives there day in and day out, I see the issues with the lights. I see the issues in the streets, right? I see a lot of, a lot of the things that I think that I have a lot of passion to be able to fix for the district.
Thank you, those are all my questions.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Williams, members of the Phoenix City Council. My name is Vania Guevara, and it is an honor and a privilege to stand before you here today. Before I begin, it is important for me to share that this moment is not the most likely or most probable. This process has been one that I have not taken on alone. I stand here today representing a long overdue opportunity, the sum of hard work, even when hard work was barely enough. This opportunity before me is an answer to a lifetime of prayers prayed by my parents, my grandmothers, and my ancestors before me. A prayer for an opportunity to do more, not just for ourselves, but for all people. I am a first-generation Salvadoran American. My parents were forced to leave El Salvador due to the political instability that erupted into a civil war. My dad, who's here, began to work at the age of six years old before coming to the United States, where he worked for Amtrak for over 40 years before retiring just last month. My mom immigrated here, and she cleaned houses for a living. When she would occasionally be paid with bad checks, she and my dad made the collective decision to, for her to stay home to raise the five of us. I'm the proud oldest sister of five siblings. My brother Joey is currently serving in the United States Army overseas as a warrant officer. He is a pilot. He's been deployed for almost six times now, for six, he's gone through six deployments. My sister Amber will begin the Master's Program of Public Administration at ASU this fall. My sister Domenica will begin the Architecture Program at ASU this fall. And our youngest Xavier is a history major, and he is currently training to become a welder. Growing up, my mom became very aware of equity issues and lack of resources in our education. Her involvement in our community transformed our neighborhood. It became safe. I remember how hard she had to work, going to meetings, meeting with other moms, going to countless hours of meetings, all towards working, all towards making available resources accessible. I am standing here before you today because my mom was dedicated to our community. Ultimately, my mom's engagement is what led and empowered me to lead and engage in District Five. My public service career began in 2009 as an AmeriCorps volunteer at an elementary school. I remember seeing a parent there every day during the morning recess. After the first week while speaking with her, I learned that she worked two jobs, and the only time she saw her six-year-old was during that morning recess. That day, I decided to go to graduate school because I knew I had to do more. In 2011, I applied for a position working for the residents of District Five, where I served over six years overseeing constituent services, community outreach, and developed and maintained public, excuse me, community initiatives. When I first began serving District Five, I was made aware of available resources for our residents. What was most alarming to me was that not everyone had access or knowledge of those resources. And I thought to myself, what would my mom do? I went to schools. I went to libraries. I went to parks. I spoke with hundreds of community members and listened to their concerns. That is education for this job that no one can never pay for. Like many families in District Five, we are raised and prepared to do more with less and settle for the bare minimum. There are also families in District Five who have worked hard for generations and deserve to continually improve and have increased opportunities for future generations, but we tend not to ask for more because we are grateful for what we have. Despite the great progress we have made in Phoenix, District Five has real needs and concerns. There are still neighborhoods without sidewalks. I personally know this because in my neighborhood, on the days that I get home from subbing before the kids do, I make sure they walk onto my yard to avoid walking home in the street. I believe I am the most qualified person to represent District Five because it's more than my home. I don't seek this position out of political. I don't seek this position out of political ambition or because I desire a job of power and respect. I seek this appointment because it is a place where I can most help my neighbors have the same resources that allowed me and my family to thrive. I hold a bachelor's degree in political science with a minor in international studies, a master's degree in public administration, and a juris doctor, all of which says that I can work hard and I have been able to do so for a significant period of time while working full-time and that I will invest that same effort with heart and energy while serving District Five. I love this district. I love my city. I love my neighborhood. And I commend those alongside me for answering the call to serve District Five. I particularly want to thank the women who have stepped up. Putting yourself forward can be a very difficult thing, but it is very necessary. For over six years, I have been privileged to serve this community through constituent services. I'm excited about the opportunity to expand my service and would be humbled and honored to be selected to serve this council district as it has given so much to me. I am convinced that I am best able to serve, lead, and engage with our residents the way that I have been able to for over six years and will continue to do so in raising the bar as a council member representing one of the most diverse council districts in this country. Members of the public, if you're in support of us seeking this appointment, please stand in solidarity. Thank you. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Lucy Dunn. Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
I have the same question that I asked beforehand.
Absolutely. Yeah, I would definitely, I mean, I would, it's a collective effort. I think ultimately whatever is in the best interest of the city, I would assess things as I have, if I'm able to review them. But I honestly think the city has a lot of strengths. There are some areas of opportunity and I would be open to looking at what can be fixed before we decide to take any drastic changes. But again, I would be open to any and all possibilities and working with those who have served on the council for the longest to best address any issue moving forward.
Thank you.
Hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Next is Lydia Hernandez.
Thank you. Good afternoon, city council members. Mayor Williams, thank you for the opportunity to stand here before you. I'm not new to city government. I've been around, I'm a resident, first of all, of the Maryville area for 24 years. I have been a very active member for 17 years of my, since I've lived in this community. I'm originally from South Texas. I grew up a farm worker. I moved here right after I attended Baylor University, Southern Christian Baylor University, and came into a culture clash in Arizona. In Maricopa County specifically, there was a dire need for bilingual Spanish speakers, genuine new community of immigrant families in the city and the urban areas. I ended up staying here. I married here. I married a Mexican national. Back then, I said there is nothing, no resolve. There were some issues. Lo and behold, I confront, I'm confronted with the immigration issue. So, long story short, I've committed my adult life into influencing public policy and trying to do everything that I can to influence that and make things right, not only for myself and my family, but the families in the state of Arizona and around the nation. I immediately ended up, I'm a school board member, currently serving for the past 13 years. I am a former state representative, all in an effort. And it happened, it wasn't strategic and it wasn't building a resume. It happened out of need to help my family out of a situation and like I said, the rest of the members. A lot of the, I've gotten, I've been involved in the city of Phoenix, serving from every nook and cranny you can think of, from being a Blightbuster volunteer, removing graffiti for two years in a row every Saturday. I don't know who, if any of the city council members can tell me they know somebody that's done that. That's how vested I have been in my community. I did that, it was recognized for most hours 2008, 2009. I recently served and just left the Human Services Commission where I served as chair as well. I served on the Maryville Village Planning Committee and I can mention a slew, you've seen my resume. What I'm asking here and the reason I'm here before you is because I am proud. I am proud that we have acquired such a diverse group of folks to run for this position. I am just going to leave you with one thought. I think we know each other, I know my involvement, and as you all know, and I think there's been some mention to it here, as an elected official of 13 years, actually now 15 years, you make decisions. We're elected to make decisions and sometimes those decisions don't sit well with everybody. You can't make everybody happy. But there's one thing that I will mention that I feel very strongly about in my journey throughout, as difficult as it has been and challenging as it has been, is that there is a resolve for everything. There is a middle of the road. And I think that, if I can mention my experience at the state legislature, I found things to be, the dividing, division lines have been so rigid between the parties that we're forgetting about addressing issues with families. And I'm here today not only as a candidate, but also because I am a resident of the Maryville community. Many of you I think I've had the opportunity to speak to, work with throughout the years, whether you may like me or not. If I fought for something, it's been for the right reason and it's been because of a cause and where it comes to my family as well. So I want to leave you with this. I think every single one of these candidates up here is a great candidate. We all, I love the stories that I'm hearing. My story is in there as well. I think it's up to all of us to make a decision based on what's in the best interest of the current situation, of the vacancy in this district. And I'm going to mention that we all are, we're all aware of the situation in our streets. I live it every day. I've benefited from the benefits of the best things that Maryville has to offer as well as the worst, being held up at gunpoint a couple of months ago, down, dealing with the lack of education opportunities, the lack of jobs, the lack, you should see the streets after yesterday's storm. I was driving down Osborne and it's no, we have to be better prepared. We know that the storms are here, we live obviously in Arizona, but the devastation and turmoil, the fact that we lose that infrastructure, that light, all those affect our families. So I leave you with this. I would like to ask for your consideration for the appointment. I think it's important. I'm asking the, and I have faith that the city council will think about the residents and who is the most qualified and prepare to hit the road running with that experience during this interim. So I ask carefully for your consideration and thank you for the opportunity respectfully.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Lydia, I have the same question that I asked previously.
I was waiting for that too. Yes, Councilwoman Pastore. The question regarding the change and where I would lie in that. You know, I come, I've served on the Cartwright School District for 13 years. I served at the national level, just on the chair-elect for the National School Board Association. And we're often faced with decisions of looking inward and assessing. I think it's, we need to be prepared to assess what's working and not working, not being delved into the situation. I would certainly, we've been through changes at Cartwright School District. We were failing 14 out of 21 schools at one point. We had to make changes. But I think it's not a drastic change that we have to address immediately. I think we have to do our due diligence and make sure that it's something that's in the benefit at the time for the whole city of Phoenix. So am I willing, perhaps? I think we need more information.
Anyone else? Hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Next is Justin Johnson.
Thank you all for being here. I know that council works nights and weekends a lot of times, not just during the day, and to come out of your break and take time to meet with all of us, I just want to let you know, I really appreciate it. I also appreciate everybody else coming here as well. I grew up in sunny soap and come from a working-class family that work hard to provide for me and my brother. My father started off in drywall and later became mayor of Phoenix. My mother worked two jobs and a third, which often was the most difficult, taking care of me and my brother. I wasn't born to a wealthy family in Phoenix. My parents worked hard to keep the 800-square-foot home in sunny soap over our heads and provide a good education for me and my brother. And also to show us that with hard work comes opportunity. Over the last 10 years, District Five has seen a lot of change. But who has it been changing for? Every day gets harder for working families to get by. Crime rates are too high. Educational opportunities are improving but still limited for many families. Our streets and neighborhoods need investment. And we need to retain and attract more businesses and jobs to the district. I'm proud of Phoenix. Like all of you, I take pride in calling myself a Phoenician. But here on the West Side and throughout District Five, we can do better, much better. That's why I want to serve on the Phoenix City Council. For those of you that don't know, I'm a husband and a father and educator to my three children that are doing very well, not making a lot of noise over there. I'm a contractor and a home builder. I've been a mentor and coach to kids at the Chris Town Y and the Maryville YMCA, an advocate for the homeless, and volunteered hundreds of hours for the city I love. I've worked on job sites, scrapping houses in the hot Phoenix summer, and built homes for working families here in the valley. I know there are several people seeking this appointment. And they all seem to have good-hearted, they all seem to be good-hearted people who want the best for District Five and the city of Phoenix. But I truly believe, it's my experience as a builder, my time on the planning commission as the chair and as a commissioner, and my history of community involvement that makes me the most qualified person to fill this seat. If I get appointed, I'm going to work hard every single day to drive investment back into District Five and specifically back into our greatest asset, our residents. Day one, I will work with residents, businesses, city staff, and other city council members, and together we will improve the quality of life for our community and the city as a whole. We deserve a representative that has a vision on how we can work together to create a beautiful community. Together, we can make our neighborhoods vastly safer and more livable by creating a community policing program that is more proactive and not reactive. We can utilize the resources available as the fifth-largest city in America to get more involved in our local K-12 Phoenix public education system and push to bring the tools necessary to help our children achieve so much more. And invest in our community and in our citizens, building an economic future that flourishes with vibrant urban buzz and jobs. What I have seen growing up here in Phoenix that amazes me every single day is it's that the people that live in this city that make it great. They invest time, money, and effort into our neighborhoods and into our city. And making an investment back into them will pay dividends. But it starts with a commitment of service and a tone of civility and inclusiveness. To reach out to all neighbors in this district, from Maryville and Villa de Paz to the Canyon Corridor and Royal Palm, all of us working together to build a better future here in District Five. And so I hope you will consider supporting me in this endeavor and for this appointment. Together, we will work hard to make sure every neighborhood in this city exemplifies what a metropolitan urban American city can and should be. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
I have the same question.
Okay. So, you know, I believe the city is doing really well. And I look forward to working with each and every one of you and the city manager to continue making sure that the city does well. You know, I think it's important that we work together and also to support each other in our districts. I think that's, those are both elements that I think together as a team, we can come to a conclusion to make sure that we're addressing the needs of the city.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Next is Ariad Bohamid.
Thank you so much, Mayor Williams. I'm actually here, probably one of the youngest people running for the candidate for the appointment. Don't have very much political experience, but I do have a desire and a passion to serve my district. I've been part of the district for over 21 years now. Have lived in Phoenix my entire life, born and raised, probably one of the most unique Phoenicians you'll probably ever meet. My parents actually came from Afghanistan as immigrants during the Soviet invasion. 1988, they moved here. A few years later, I was born. I was one of the first born within the family. I mean, practically the only reason I'm here is to serve my community, serve the people within my community. As you can tell, my public speaking skills aren't the best, but I'm doing my best. I'm really honored to be sitting alongside with everybody sitting up here with me. Really honored to even be standing up here. Started out, you know, with rough upbringing. Obviously, my father was being, was the only one working growing up. Mother was a full-time mom. But he instilled a lot of, a lot of drive in me, being, coming from nothing and, you know, being where I am now. Currently, I'm working as a life coach for young adults diagnosed with autism. I've been doing that for a few years now. Before that, I was investing both in real estate and in stocks. Getting into the field I am now, I realized I have a passion for helping. And once I realized that the opportunity for city council presented itself, I figured it was an opportunity that I have to take, which is the reason why I'm here. I've kept it short, sweet, to the point, but I really do want to thank everybody for being here, seeing all these great people. I mean, they care about the district and just being up here, like I said, is probably one of the best things that could happen to me. If anybody has any questions, everybody will answer.
I believe councilwoman does?
I have the same question.
Same question. So realistically, my, the best intentions for me would be what is best for my community. I would do whatever I can in order to make sure my community is in a positive direction, going towards a positive path. So if there is a decision that needs to be made and I feel like it is positive for my district, I will go ahead and make it.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, hearing none. That is our last candidate. I have been asked if I would give the council a five-minute break. Oh, you missed the very first person?
I missed the very first candidate, the question.
Audrey? She missed you. She's got to catch you.
Yes, ma'am. Can you repeat that for me, please?
The question was if, in the future, and I don't remember exactly, so in the future, if there was a reason to change our city manager, or if you've been asked to change your city manager, would you do it?
I would believe that I would definitely consult my other council members. Coming in as a new district council member, I believe that your expertise and knowledge would give me some insight, but I would do what is best for the district, period. I would do what's best for the district, the city of Phoenix.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know we have some cards. I'm going to ask that they all be entered into the record so that they show. I'm not going to necessarily have everyone come up and speak. I have been asked and I will grant a five-minute recess. Could you please time us? Thank you. Okay, I think I'm going to call the meeting back to order. Councilman, or Vice Mayor Waring has asked to make a statement.
Sure, thank you. It's a statement I think I've made once before, so it's not really a statement, it's just an observation. I don't like this process. It is not a reflection of the candidates, it's not a reflection of any of the folks up here, none of us who I believe participated in setting up the system. Since I've been on the council, six years, there have been 13 different council members and then myself, so 14 members. In six of those cases, four were appointed and two, myself included, beat somebody in the election who was appointed. So this has come up six of the 14 times, just in my relatively limited tenure on the council. It's almost half the times, you're looking at somebody up here, they got appointed or they had to run against somebody who was appointed. But you know what? In all of those cases they had in common, there wasn't one person in their district who actually voted for them. So just think about that for a second. We're democracy, right? It seems like there should be one person in the district who selected them, but that's actually not the case with this system. And I've said this before, I just wanted to put that out there. I personally believe we should be picking independents who are not going to run for the office and then let voters decide at the next opportunity. But that's not the system the way it is. I do wish, I've asked this before, that we could move forward and make a change. I think I'm a lone voice in the wilderness in that regard. But it's still something I just, I kind of wanted to get off my chest. It's something that bothers me every time we do this. Again, it's not a reflection of the wonderful candidates that we heard from and everything, and it's no reflection on the people who have been appointed or anything else. I will give you an example, though, of how important this decision is and how it shouldn't be taken lightly. And there's always a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff going on regarding these appointments. these appointments. I try to be a little more of a dispassionate observer, but, but there's definitely stuff going on, and just the implications of that are this, this is not to criticize him in any way, but Mayor Stanton was appointed to his council seat in 2000. It's now 2018, with the exception of two years, he's been on the council for 16 of the 18 years, and now he's running for Congress. Relatively young guy, my age, so to the extent both of us are young, he could be around for a lot longer. And again, I'm not saying that, this isn't a partisan thing, I'm not saying it negatively, it's just one example. That appointment could lead to someone impacting public policy in Arizona if he wins this congressional race. He could do other things going forward or be there for 20, 30 years or something at his age. You're talking about somebody who might impact public policy in Arizona, I don't know what his plans are, but for 40 or 50 years, but it all stems from that appointment. That's a, that's a kind of a big enchilada, you know? We only have nine congressional districts, so just food for thought, but again, initially, nobody living in the district participated that, in that at all. And I don't know if that bothers any of you, it bothers me, and I guess I just wanted to take two minutes to get that off my chest, so thank you.
Mayor? I have a motion, I mean, I want to nominate Betty.
I recognize the nomination. It doesn't require a second at this point, but thank you. I believe, Pastor, did you want to make a statement?
I did, and the statement was, I asked today earlier for the stats of the demographics of District Five, and it's very interesting to me and how the demographics of District Five have changed within the last, I would say, eight years or less. And it's a very diverse district in the sense of African-American, there are 19,000, Asians, there are 3,800, Caucasian, 85,000, and Hispanic, 106. And it has changed because that's not what Maryville or that piece of that area looked like, and it's amazing on how the growth that we, we have done and the diversity, I'm impressed by the diversity as a Phoenician, a native Phoenician, a fifth-generation Arizonan, and understanding my ancestors or my grandparents' history and my parents' history, how Arizona was really settled and built was there were sections of Hispanics, and that was a section of the Hispanics, and then there was a section of the African-American, and there was a section of the Caucasian, and everybody just operated within their, their world. However, that's changed. Every district is very diverse, every district has many different languages that are spoken, and every district should represent, there should be a representative of that district that is part of that, of that area. And so I just wanted to give some background of diversity in District Five.
I do have a nomination for Betty, I believe you said? Rodardo? Would you call roll, please?
DeCiccio?
Yes.
Gallego?
May I explain my vote, Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to say thank you to everyone who applied. It is wonderful for our city to have candidates of such caliber. You all have inspiring stories. It would be an honor to serve with any one of you. Betty, I respect you enormously, but I had made a commitment to someone else, so I am a no.
Noakowski? Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
No.
Waring?
No.
Mayor Williams?
No.
Mayor, I have a nomination.
Councilwoman?
I would like to nominate Vanya.
We have a motion. Would you call the roll, please?
DeCiccio?
No.
Gallego?
Yes.
Noakowski?
No.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Williams?
Yes. I believe we just selected a candidate, or, Vanya, congratulations. We still have an item on our agenda. We have to call the special election for filling the vacancy for the remainder of the term. Do I have a motion?
Move the motion.
Oh, pardon me, I goofed, you gotta have a 24-hour paragraph.
The title of the following ordinance number on the agenda was available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only, ordinance number S-44900.
Now we have the motion to set the election, and do we need to be date-specific or just say it's for the... Okay. March 29th, 2019.
The motion is to special election for March 29th? 12th. 12th. 2019.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call?
DeCiccio?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Noakowski? Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes, unanimous vote to go forward.
Mayor, before we adjourn, if the new District Five Councilwoman wanted to address the audience, would there be an opportunity?
Yes, she may.
Thank you, everyone. Again, this is a collective effort, there's by no means, I'm not, the person standing before you is actually made up of neighborhood leaders across the district who are on both sides of the political spectrum, working together continuously, the work obviously doesn't stop, and I look forward to seeking your advice, your help, and your experience on the council to work with you. I respect all of you enormously, you're people that I want to work with, and again, I seek your advice. I'm lost for words, I'm just really overwhelmed with gratitude, and I consider myself and my family, my community around me, to be very, very blessed. Thank you for the opportunity, and I won't let you down. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to thank the other candidates. We're very proud to have you as part of our community, and please, there's still a race going to happen, you're free to get into that race, no offense, Vanya, but it's wide open, and we need you in the community, you are all leaders and you are all valuable to us. So thank you for coming today, putting yourself out there, and continue the good work. Thank you very much.